Welcome to Give Me A Break, everybody. I'm John the Carboni. It's a question that's often asked every time the teacher or a principal gets concerned. Why are so many kids calling in sick for school? I mean, if you're really sick, I mean, don't you think if you're sick, you should actually stay home? Yes, but at the time, you know, not everyone is sick. You know, they want to stay home, play video games all day, hang out with their friends, watch some movies, take care of their parents, go to work and all. But, you know, that's fine. If you want to like hang out with your friends, that's okay. But you know, save that for the weekend. Save that for either the weekend or or you can save it for the holiday break or for your school break, summer break, winter break, spring break, or days when you're off of school, like for ice days or weather days. Here's some, uh, here's an answer from, uh, CBC.
School avoidance.
Some days I just really don't want to go in.
What is he saying about why he doesn't want to go?
You don't always get a clear reason?
A CBC exclusive analysis shows a rise in students across the country calling in sick.
Every day there are thousands of students who are out of school.
What's causing so many to stay home? Kids don't always have the words to express what's going on.
I probably have crossbones except this one gets like stopped.
Two months into the new school year, and 12-year-old William D. Pasquale has already missed 10 days of grade seven.
I don't really like school at the moment.
Having cereal, getting your outfit together just starts to show up in resistance.
William's father, Norm, works from home.
Five nine seven, yeah.
He has the added task of supervising William when he doesn't want to go to school.
Or about the time where you have to get them to school so that you can get back to start your workday. So the clock is ticking and, um, you know, that sort of summer resistance is very effective.
What is he saying about why he doesn't want to go?
You don't always get a clear reason. It might be sometimes I'm feeling sick. Maybe that's legit sometimes. Maybe it's not necessarily legit other times. Maybe there's another reason like bullying in the schoolyard and it's happening.
I twitch a lot in class. And like, sometimes I get made fun of that.
Can you tell me about what happens?
They'll say like mean stuff.
And how does that feel?
Well, sometimes I'm like, I don't care. Okay. Yeah, you said it. But sometimes it like kind of like hurts.
When there's been an incident at school, like it carries with him the next day and then the next morning it becomes the reason why he doesn't want to go to school that day.
To find out how widespread this is, CBC News obtained attendance data from some of the largest school districts in the country. Of those that track illness, our analysis shows compared to five years ago, absences for reported illness went up.
When we think about school attendance, we think about it as a symptom of underlying issues that can be going on. We do have to set a date for that.
Natasha McBrierty and David Smith belong to a research partnership investigating attendance issues among children and youth in Canada.
We know from the families we work with, we know from the service providers that anxiety definitely is a contributor to attendance.
Anxiety over taking a test, difficulty fitting in, stress at home, bullying.
The staying home, this is a well-known, well-documented, uh, reaction of kids and parents to bullying situations. Every day there are like hundreds or thousands of students who are out of school because of the bullying that they're experiencing.
Students like William.
Sometimes when you don't want to go to school, your mom says you get a tummy ache.
Well, sometimes like I eat something and like my stomach hurts after eating it.
Your mom's gonna pass you some seaweed there for your lunch. And a thermos for your lunch. You do your best. You want your child to go to school every day so they can learn, grow and thrive. But you also have to look out for your child's wellbeing and, and mental wellbeing and, um, there are days where you look at your child and they simply, they don't have it in them to go to school that day.
And nobody has anyone to go to school. You know why? Because not one person would look at this and say, there's one word to describe it. Let me say something. There's one word to describe this. It's called truancy. It's something we've, we've been focusing on ever since day one of the broadcast. You know? There are kids out there. There's people out there who are pretending to be sick. You know, you fake sick. I mean, it's, I mean, we, I mean, there are many reasons you gotta leave school. Like, you know, help out your mom and dad. Or if you're being bullied, or you know, if you have to, or if you're sick. If you're sick, your parent needs to let the school know. And they'll, and they'll, and it'll be taken care of. Just notify the school and then send it to them the next day and then it'll be taken care of. Then it'll be taken care of, you know? That's the whole reason. But it's not the same thing as calling in sick so you can go fishing. You know, it's to teach you that if you're sick at work, you need to let your boss know. And then provide an excuse, a piece of paper stating why you were absent that day. That's just how it is. All right. Coming up next, we're gonna be looking into air duct clean scams. From the Better Business Bureau and from Inside Edition, Lisa Guerrero has some details, so please stay with us. The roof's leaking, your heater's not working, your air conditioner's not working, you're in sudden need of a repair. But how would you feel if someone were to scare you into paying a lot of money, like a thousand dollars for a new AC or a thousand, or $3,000 for a new water heater? Would you be scared into calling that without even looking over the real diagnosis? Here's Lisa Guerrero.
It's every homeowner's nightmare, disgusting mold contaminating your home. Some houses even have to be destroyed when the problem gets too severe. But would a licensed contractor tell you that you have a mold problem even if you didn't? To find out, we had this home in Birmingham, Alabama inspected by experts from three different companies. They looked at the air ducts, examined the vents and checked for water damage.
Is there a mold problem in this house?
No, there's not a mold problem in this house.
We then looked for ads like these found all over the country. We called this one offering a great deal, just $49.95 to clean the air ducts in our home.
Hi, I wanted to see if I could make an appointment.
But first, we placed hidden cameras throughout the house. When the technicians arrived, I was posing as the homeowner. They looked all over the house and after a 30-minute inspection, they told me the bad news.
We tested positive for mold in the outside unit.
This is a mold test? And it tested positive for mold?
You failed dramatically.
What these guys didn't know was that we had sent in an undercover producer to apply for a job with the company, Advanced Air Quality.
Opportunity here to make a hundred thousand a year, no [BLEEP].
This is Ed Perro. He's been running businesses like these for years and he knows you can't get rich cleaning air ducts for $49.95.
Okay, I promise you. Okay, we're gonna find mold. Okay?
Back at our house with our hidden cameras, the unsuspecting salesman from Advanced Air Quality showed me a vent pulled from the bathroom.
What is that?
It's from your master bathroom.
That's mold on there?
Yeah. The, the reason why he's rusted out is mold attacks itself and it eats right through the paint.
But our mold expert says that's bogus. Do you see any mold here?
Uh, no, I certainly do not. What he is referring to is obviously rust.
So he was trying to scare me?
Yes.
So what's it gonna cost? A lot more than 49 bucks.
You're looking at 111496.
Wow, that's a lot of money.
When I complained about the price, he calls his manager.
That's just a little bit more than you can afford to spend today. Is there anything we can do for her, sir? Uh, well, it's a level one contamination.
Level one contamination? That sounds serious. But it's really just a trick they use to fool the customer. They learn it in training.
And now the manager's gonna ask you, what do you need? A level one, level two or level three? Based on the customer. Are you gonna need 10% off? Are you need 40% off? Are you gonna need 30% off?
Sure enough, that level one contamination turned into a 10% discount.
You can, uh, take the 111496 and bring it down to 999.
$999.
At this point, it was time to tell them who I really am.
Joe, I have to tell you, I'm not really the homeowner.
Yeah.
My name's Lisa Guerrero and I'm with Inside Edition. And you've just charged me, uh, a thousand dollars for work that this house doesn't need.
I can only make recommendations. I took you outside. You want to take your cameras outside? We'll go outside.
He takes us outside and redid the mold test, but this time with our experts hovering over him, the test comes back negative. No mold. We wanted to talk to Ed Perro, the man we were told owns the company. It turns out he's a registered sex offender and has a rap sheet for grand theft, assault and burglary. We caught up with him on the street, but he wasn't too happy to see me.
Mr. Perro, I'm Lisa Guerrero with Inside Edition. Are you ripping off the customers of your air duct cleaning business?
Perro just turned and walked away. Then we received a call from this guy, Patrick Milliken, who said he was the owner of the business. When we went to his office, he wasn't there, but then he pulled up on his motorcycle. When he calmed down, he insisted he doesn't rip off his customers and said he has absolutely no connection to that ex-con, Ed Perro.
He has given this business a bad rep. He's given it a bad name. Um, he's known throughout as a ripoff, as a scam artist, as everything in the world.
So there would never be a time when he would actually be participating in training with your technicians?
I'm gonna end this interview if you try to word this again to me, that he's a part of my business.
Okay.
I've explained this to you. I've been nice about doing this interview for you. Do not accuse me or assinuate that that man is a part of my business again.
Then can I show you something that you might want to know?
Sure.
That you might want to see. This is a training session three months ago with you and Ed Perro training your technicians.
That's right. There he is, with Ed Perro, the man he just called a scam artist at a training session for new employees.
Can you explain why you would lie about that?
Real simple. The man knows a lot about the business. I'm not a fool. Got my throat. On taking knowledge from and about. But he is not part of my business. I do run a local business. Okay, well, we're gonna find mold.
The Better Business Bureau in Alabama says if a company wants to charge you to remove mold, always give a second opinion. For more tips, come to our website, insideedition.com.
I switched from hoop.
Do your homework. If you're gonna find somebody that can help repair your house or do this or that, get some remodeling done, you need to do your homework. If you just sit there and call this person and say, you're gonna be upcharged this amount of money, you need to, you've got to do your homework. I mean, even if your neighbor, if your neighbor works for remodeling company and say, and you say to them, hmm, we can get some work done. You need to look into the person that owns this business, find out if he has a criminal record, and if he does have a criminal record, stay away from him. Even if you have to give him COVID, stay six feet away from him.
Little cover jumping.
Seriously, stay away from him. Stay away from him or her or whatever. They got a rap sheet, just talk to them as your neighbor. But if they want to work in your house, stay away from them. Take a shit in their sink if they have to. Take a shit in their toilet. Take a shit in their urinal. Take a shit in the sink if all I care. Sorry, I've got a a video on my mind.
All right, listen to this. What started as one online.
Okay.
All right, listen to this.
Coming up a story that I think it's gonna raise a lot of concerns. Can you ever imagine, you know, as a former principal, being under fire for opposing family vacations during school? And it causes outrage for parents. Like, what if there's a family emergency? We're gonna hear from him. We're gonna hear from him when we return. Stay with us. 45% for yes. 55 for no way. If you heard this former principal saying that, saying that, you know, family emergency, family, like, you know, no kid should ever take a vacation if it's a family emergency. Of course they should. What if there was a funeral? What if there was, someone was in the hospital? You're gonna sit there and say, if it's an emergency, it's an emergency. We don't need you to go to the hospital. A former principal says students shouldn't miss school for vacations, spark a parent outrage. Just take, take a look at this.
All right, listen to this. What started as one online opinion has sparked a parent meltdown.
That's right. A former high school principal posted saying that she understands pulling kids out of school for emergencies, but not for vacations, and parents lost it. Gil Johnson says she woke up to dozens of fiery messages, parents arguing that travel is like a field trip and schools shouldn't police family time. Now, Johnson has 35 years working in classrooms and she says that she is not ruining beach trips. She just wants parents to know that when a student misses a week, teachers struggle to keep the class on track. Her bottom line, public school comes with shared responsibility, even for trips to Disney.
So we did ask you your thoughts, uh, during our broadcast this morning over on WCNC. Here's what, uh, you all thought about this. Was this much about do about nothing or, or is this principal, ex-principal way off? Take a look at, um, what you all thought, um, if we have that.
Here it comes. Ooh. The most common though, but that's pretty close. I mean, 55, 25. I wouldn't say it's overwhelmingly because again, as the resident mom here, I think most parents generally want their kids to be in school as much as possible when they should be there.
I, I'm slightly confused. How did we ask this question? Cause I'm not sure yes to what and no to what.
So I believe that our question, if we can bring it back up was, is it okay to take your kid out of school for vacation during the school year?
I wanna make sure I was just being brave.
Yep, yep, yep. And so we have yes, 45%, no, saying no, keep them in there all the time.
I'm sort of surprised by that. I think I might've thought it might've been the inverse.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, I think, I mean, I mean, I don't have a super strong opinion about it. I think, I do think a week is a long time to take your kid out, right? But
I think a few days.
You're creating more work for your, for kids if you.
Correct, correct.
Spark a love for science that lasts a lifetime. This incredible set comes with not one, but ten.
Shut up. All right, listen to it.
Okay. I'm so confused. There, there are so many vacation days during the school year. Why isn't even an argument? To be fair, hotel pricing flights are cheaper during a school year than screen summer winter breaks, so financially makes sense. But they still shouldn't miss the weakest school for more of a Disney trip. It's like, little Johnny, I want you, we're gonna go to Disneyland this, next week and so I'm gonna have to fake sick to go to Disneyland. No. Do that during the summer. My god, tickets, tickets were cheaper. I don't care tickets were cheaper. You can't end the man's go. I mean, if they had to miss a week of school, it'd be because for one thing, family emergencies. Like, if somebody had a family emergency, like they had to go to a funeral or a medical emergency, like they had to go on a surgery that day. When I was in school, when I was a sophomore in 2014, I had a, I had a pile of assists to where, which I'm not gonna go into that. It had something to do with World War II and car seats. Every appointment that happened, mostly in the afternoons, which was during lunch. One time was during PE. And coach was like, so how'd it go? Yeah, my mom's here. My mom's here. Oh, okay. Yeah, you're good to go. And so we scheduled surgery for for the end of, for during the summer. Which is good. Now imagine if it was during the school week. I would have a lot of unexcused absences. And then truancy would be like, the only times you can't miss school is if you have, is if you're sick or have a family or medical emergency. Those are the only times, but you still gotta provide no, a note saying that this happened. Pretty sure they can understand like, oh, you went to the funeral of Saint James or you went to this place, that place. But that's not the same that's not the same thing as calling in sick so you can go fishing. So what does it go? It's the way we learn here. The best place for a child is in school all day, every day. I went to school for many years and there were times where I was sick. I was sick from school. I couldn't go to school because I was sick. So therefore, therefore what should happen here is, you know, if, if, uh, if you have a medical emergency, family emergency, it needs to be documented and sent to the school before it becomes unexcused. If it becomes unexcused for like weeks, you'll be subject to truancy court. You might even think, okay, why is it best for my child to go to school all day, every day? Because like we talked about, if you're, like, I had this, I had this conversation with a friend of mine, with a friend, with a fan outside of Hard Knocks in a cold, a cold night. You know, we were talking about like GEDs and like, I told him, hey, I'm not against people getting a GED or types of education like homeschooling, whatever, GEDs, online school, whatever. But what I am against is, you know, kids just not wanting to go to, get in their education. If you're, when kids, let's say something, I would, this was a quote from the video that we saw from Kearns County. When kids are not in school, statistics will tell you that they're participating in very negative behaviors, crime. There is a connection between truancy, gangs and crime. And believe me, we've all seen happen in our communities, burglarizing homes, stealing, robbing, assaulting, shootings. We've all seen it happen in our communities. That's just why all these, that's why all these kids are crowding themselves in a juvenile, in juvenile hall or in a juvenile detention center because of what they're doing. And so it leads you to believe that, you know, leads you to believe that, you know, something has to be done, right? So it's in the community service, it's just, you know, a good way to teach them, like, you know, this is what can happen to you. And also, you know, and also another thing. It's not just, you know, you're decreasing attendance and you're increasing juvenile delinquency. We don't want to crowd the halls in juvenile detention center and we still like, don't want this to ever happen to any child, you know? When kids don't go to school, this is what can happen to a child. A child can't go to school, the child can't get the diploma. That's exactly how I feel. Up next, spank bank. This parent exposes school board and teachers assigned students to
For education?
To, uh, you know,
In the training?
To spank, to probably spank the bank. Clearly it was just, you know, to describe sexual fantasies. This was two years ago. You'll get to see that clip when we come back. Last night we focused in on those school board controversy flights that are happening. Started out with one with some people who were like reading pornography. But there was, but there is more to it than meets the eye. A father, the video that we're about to see is a father who went after the school board for Simon asking someone about sexual fantasies. Take a look. You have nothing to say.
Many of you know me, so I am here to discuss this atrocity of assignments. I want to first say, you're a liar. It's not a rumor. I have the proof right here in my phone of the whom with you, with whom would you do it with? And my daughter specifically stated that the teacher put up a will on the class board and it stated anal penetration, oral sex, licking up ear, kissing, and he wanted them to write down the initials of a boy or girl that they would do these activities with. Now, I don't know what's worse, wanting to know my child's sexual fantasy or who they're gonna have anal penetration and oral sex with. What is he gaining from this? What do you gain from this information? Why has my daughter naively did the assignment? Because she's scared. She wants to get good grades. She wants to be, you know, get her license. She has to get good grades. And so she does this assignment. Where's the assignment? Why hasn't she had it turned back to her with her grade on it? What is he doing with it? Is this for his spank bank? Is he literally using this for his sexual deviant? These are questions that need to be answered. He he verbally abused, verbally sexually abused every single child in that classroom. Do you look up the definition? I gave you the paper for the definition of verbal sexual abuse. Now, sexual abuse is sexual abuse. So where's the criminal charges? Why is he still teaching? Is it because he's a football coach and Churchill's doing good? Don't want to lose that hype? Because football doesn't matter when it comes to our children. Okay? This sexual deviant needs to be removed. If you do not remove him, I'm giving you my word today that tomorrow morning, I will go down to the county clerk's office and I'm gonna file for the removal of every single one of you.
Um, I want to start with prethusening that I'm obviously not in his health class, which clearly makes my opinions about it irrelevant. I went to our vice principal, I talked to her about my concerns, I tried to be a voice for the student body and she dismissed it because I'm not in her class. As one of the presidents of ESSU, we decided to bring this up in feminist student union last Friday. People have mentioned this is a sexual abuse and a sexual harassment issue. It is a feminist issue. And we brought it up and what happened is that adults in the bathroom swarmed around all of us and they told us that we had to shut it down. We didn't mention his name. We didn't even mention his name. We brought up something on the news. We talked about things that are wrong on the news constantly. We brought up what was happening in the news. We talked about a relevant issue at our school and we were told that we had to shut it down. This is ridiculous. People are not attending his class. People are uncomfortable outside of his health class. It is not just them, it's the class, it is the teacher.
So what we want then? These are something that comes from two years ago. Why are the parents forced to, why are the parents are forced to sit there and explain criminal criminality before the board instead of before the court, the judge, beyond me? Purge every groomer for every school everywhere in this coun, in this country. The father should go directly to the local police and file police report. This is definitely child sexual exploitation. Kudos to the dad. That teacher needs to be arrested and the school board needs to be investigated and recalled. They should arrest for crimes of kids. Stop talking to the school boards, call the police. This was a crime. Get a lawyer. The fellow coach, you put prisoner, attempted child molestation. I'm surprised at how these teachers don't suddenly disappear once in a while. I don't care what class my kid was attending at that school. Asking a minor online about the sexual fantasies is illegal. Don't ask a minor about details in their sexual desires is illegal. Why is it? About details in their sexual desires is illegal. Why is it legal for a teacher to do so and call in an assignment? It's illegal. Why does no one on that panel even look phased by the, by any of what he's saying? Like it's just a regular day at the office. It's like. Hmm 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 hmm. We can answer your concern. We'll deal with it. I mean. We want sexual education, yes. We want our kids to learn about sex. But not through the school excessive sexist, like when we were kids going up in health class. No, health class was a step was separate. In PE classes, it it was a health class all in one. So you would have PE and health class. I think it was like, uh. Maybe like once a year. If you were in like it, if you're like an elementary, primary, you would learn about health class, which was part of your physical education, like, you know. You would talk about, you know, food groups and all, healthy eating habits and all. That's what would have the beginning assignments to do. And then after that. You're done. PE teacher is also a health teacher. That's how it is, you know, you get your assignments done. And then. This was over sexual fantasies.
Football coach and Churchill's doing good? Don't want to lose that hype? Because football doesn't matter when it comes to our children. Okay? This sexual deviant needs to be removed. If you do not remove him. I'm giving you my word to date that tomorrow morning. I will go down to the county clerk's office and I'm going to file for the removal of every single one of you.
It's ridiculous. It is so, it is ridiculous. We have lost common sense. You don't do that. And if the principal knew about this. He or she would be concerned. And start firing that seven and teacher being put on suspension. If he or she had not put that teacher on suspension without pay or with pay. Without pay. Then this would have been brought up for the school board. You know, you can't do that to, you can't be asking a child, hey, what's your fantasy about sex? And then just call it a day. That's like slapping family friendly on everything and then making it look like a pervert. Yeah, that video. When we come back. The E U S D many years ago. Had parents lit up about. And had parents lit up about a drag show that happened where they just. Slapped the family, that family friendly into a drag show and then made it pornographic and inappropriate. Where this mother was lit. The fuck up. Let's take a look at this.
I just want to know what it is, uh, that makes a drag show family friendly? Because if you follow it to its logical conclusion, you can slap family friendly titles on anything. You can have family friendly gentlemen's clubs. Family friendly strip shows, family friendly Fifty Shades of Grey, Real Loud. Will you appro- approve my flyer? I want to host an all the sex secrets of the Kama Sutra for kids and families if. It's family friendly. My question. Uh, what is it about a grown man? And I honestly sincerely as a woman mean this. What is it about a grown man? Costumed in a sparkly bra with augmented boobs busting out. A leather miniskirt barely covering his twerking ass with tuck tape on his front while spreading his fish netted legs. As he rides on the ground, grinding his groin next to a minor. Family friendly. You owe us an answer. And you know, you don't get to hide by just taking something down off Peachtree and calling it a day. You owe an explanation and apology to everyone. You all got caught with the story hands down. And while we have a culture that has a massive problem with child porn, with sex trafficking, you. A little school district's board of adults made the decision to feature an event to hypersexualize young children. Do you want to know? That the word that defines that? It's groomer. You all played the activist pimp for in a line surgical center. And for a twenty-one plus gay bar. It makes you groomers and activist pimps. And we won't have those sitting on a school board who oversees the education of our children. You all stepped out of line. You should be ashamed. There's nothing loving. There's nothing. Let's unite and include because the logical conclusion of that is you end up in diabolical evil. There are boundaries.
Thank you, Brittany, for speaking out against that. In the last couple of weeks, Kimberly Wright has also.
Now, that, that was just. That was a mother trying to make a stand for her children. For everybody.
Three days a week, she taught LGBTQ curriculum in her class. It raises the question. How many of those students are excelling in that classroom? Is everybody in that class getting A's in math? English, grammar, social studies? Sorry, are we doing Bible studies in classrooms? No, we're not, right? So why is this a certain agenda being pushed into the classroom? I don't care what kind of sex is being discussed. Her sexuality nudity does not belong in the ears in a classroom? Eight-year-old kid. Three days a week, she taught LGBTQ.
That was the focus of the subject. You may, you may remember back in twenty twenty-two, we did an investigation into LGBTQ. That that was focusing in on that school board meeting from Substack. Which led to amount of documents. All about emails and documents that were not brought up before the Board of Education. So in any sense, they just, you know. Got away with it. Take a look at this one from, uh. Four years ago.
My name is Carrie. You see my shirt? It's like mamas and I'm a mama there. And there's a lot of mamas in this city, like. And no one's gonna mess with our stuff. Uh, I'm a resident of Encinitas, born and raised in Yakin. And tonight, I'm simply going to tell you to unmask our children. We're done begging. In fact, we're done asking for permission. We are going to be unmasking our children today.
That's right.
The parents are done. We're done asking you public servants for permission. We are done. You can all wear your mask. In fact, you can wear two masks and three masks. You can wear gloves. You can have plexiglass. You can do whatever you need to do to keep you safe. But we, the parents, believe we have a choice for our children. And I don't know who you think you are, that you think that you have more of a say than us, the parents and our doctors. I don't know who any of you think you are. I really don't. And I'm ciddic. We are declaring our freedom tonight. We do not consent to the lies, fear mongering and abuse. You all know it's abuse. This is tyrannical leadership, poor leadership. None of you are willing to stand up for our children. This is why we are all here tonight. Cause we're fed up. We're done asking permission. And I want to let you know, Emily, you're up in twenty twenty-two, Greg, you're up in twenty twenty-two, Marla, you're up in twenty twenty-two, and Jody, you're up in twenty twenty-four. I know that myself, I would love to run this school. And I know many, many of you. I'm going to replace all of you. So I'm going to promise you tonight that I will campaign against you. I will, I will fundraise against you and I will make sure that none of you ever serve in a public space ever again, which at the time is.
It's all about the mask. I mean, it's twenty twenty-five. It was five years since the pandemic. You know, the whole reason for these masks is to protect the kids. And yet, you know. Parents were upset like, oh, you know, maybe. I don't feel like my child should wear a mask because the mask thing doesn't. Because COVID doesn't affect children. Well, I don't know what research you have done. To claim that. But where's the proof? Take a look at this one from eight months ago.
This mother was enraged after the school forced her daughter to do this.
The girls want their locker rooms and bathrooms back. They want their privacy back. This nightmare began on February fifth. While my daughter was using the girls' bathroom and was stunned that a biological male student was using it as well. She came home frightened and was extremely upset. That day, I filed a civil rights complaint on behalf of my daughter with the Department of Justice. It has now been referred to the Department of Education. The situation went from bad to worse. A few days later, the male student was present in the girls' locker room. Feeling violated, the girls made the choice to not change into their PE clothes with a biological male student present. The next day, multiple teachers all came into the girls' locker room, making them change into uniform. How dare they?
She is suing for three million dollars. Like and subscribe if you want her to. This mother was enraged.
Suing for three million dollars? I think. I think she would win that lawsuit. I think she would win. Because, you know. Take away the girls' locker room. Let's have a male focusing on the girls. What a bunch of dumbasses. Take away, I mean. It's like, you know, we don't have an mind to build locker rooms. Well, me, maybe you should send those kids to the staff bathroom and change, bitch. Because, you know, if you're not gonna have a staff bathroom. Which if you're gonna have the male change in the male bathroom, when the females don't have a female locker room. What you need to do is to have the men. No, no, what I don't want to go, I'm not gonna go there because I don't want to have a spark debate. But what I want to say here is this, you know, where's the common sense? Nobody understands common sense. We've lost it. So. Common sense alert. Good morning. They've lost it. They looked for it and they can't find it. No one can find it because nobody cares but the child and the parents. And when it comes to the education of a child, it's the parents who want what's best for the kids. Of what they want to learn. Like, you know, English, social studies and all. It's what the parent wants. But for sexual education, a signed piece of paper saying, you know, blah, 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 blah. And you're good to go. But when it comes to, you know, sexual fantasies and all, the board's like. We don't want to deal with it. We don't care. We're not gonna listen to the parents. We're gonna do what we want and we don't care. We don't care the parents saying, we're not gonna pay them a dime. And. We'll just do what we want because we're a school board member. No, fuck with us. Well, maybe you should change the rules or resign, bitch. That's all you can do, you know? If you don't like running for school board. Your ass needs to get resigned. Or better yet, y'all's ass needs to be fucking recalled. Cause these instances that happened, it was your fucking fault. Y'all's asses needs to be fucking recalled. Process the paperwork for a recall and the whole fucking school board to say, we made a mistake. We can't fix it. Therefore, we resign. There we go. We solved the problem. Then the community would voice its anger. Then the whole community, one. It'd be, it'd be the whole community being as acting school board members. So that they can be understandable and look at this and go, this, this, that and a third. Like that, uh, father from months ago who confronted the school board because. You know, the child was. Cause a boy watched a little girl in the bathroom. No common sense there. Not one person, not even, like. All the board members just ignored it, moved on and like. We'll deal with it when we have time. Let's move on. It should have been dealt with right away. And when you're dealing with something about, you know. If we're dealing with something like this, what you need to obviously understand is that, you know. You cannot. Put that on the back burner and then focus on the other agenda. That's going on in your, in the plan, you know? As a school board president, what you gotta sit there and say is. There's an issue going on. It's best if we hold off all these items that we have and focus on that one thing. There you go. That's helping out the parents. And if I was school board president, I would simply say, you know what? We have, we have other plan. I think we should focus on what's happening. It's tax dollars at its finest. That's just what it is. We're gonna take a break. We'll be right back. Did you have a good Thanksgiving? Did you order some cranberry sauce from Ocean Spray? What if you would have realized that? Your can of, your can of cranberry sauce. Had just water in it. And your family's all excited for that beautiful cranberry sauce. You just pour it on, it's like. This is cranberry sauce? It's just plain water. Come on, Timmy. Pack your bags. We're getting the fuck out of here. Take it to go play, Timmy, we're getting the fuck out of here. But I want to stay watch some football. I don't care. Get your dog play. Put it up in the pool. Let's get the fuck out of here. Yes, mommy. Hurry, hurry up. Yes, mom. Stop mother crying. Make y'all do some quiet about. Take a look at this video. Here's Emma Carano.
It's a mystery that shocked families across America celebrating Thanksgiving. Imagine opening a can of Ocean Spray cranberry sauce for your traditional holiday feast and finding this.
Water.
Water.
No cranberry sauce, just water and not just one can.
Water. Water. Unbelievable.
It happened to all these families. They posted their videos on social media.
Water.
That is all, those cans of water.
So why did they take video of opening cans?
Are you videoing this?
They had previously opened other cans and when they found just water, they wanted a record when they opened remaining cans.
Both of them empty.
Oh my gosh, full of water.
A son of a.
I spoke with Sandra Kelly, who hosted fifteen guests for Thanksgiving at her home in Michigan.
This is can number four.
How important is cranberry sauce to your meal?
It is very important because we do cornbread dressing. And cornbread dressing is just not the same without the cranberry sauce.
Not the same, not the same.
My daughter was sorely disappointed.
I came to this supermarket in New York to buy some Ocean Spray cranberry sauce to see if I would get any sauce or just water. We opened six cans of cranberry sauce, just like the ones in the videos. No water here, all sauce. Ocean Spray says in a statement, millions of families enjoy their cranberry sauce this holiday season. But even one can of sauce not meeting expectations matters to us. We're looking into how this may have happened. We've reached out to the folks who shared these videos to make it right.
Full of water.
Ocean Spray sells approximately seventy million cans of cranberry sauce each year, the majority around the holidays.
We've lost cranberry common sense. That's just how it is. I appreciate, I appreciate you spending part of evening, evening with us. That's all for this edition of Give Me a Break Friday. We'll see you again for Give Me a Break Tuesday. Follow us on YouTube and give me, I'm John the Carmen. Follow us on YouTube and give me a break. Thank you for watching. Stop bullying, speak up, concentration not strength. No jaywalking. Except if you're in California. If you're in California, it's legal to jaywalk. If you're anywhere but California, you cannot jaywalk. Otherwise. It would be something. Why was it something like this? No jaywalking. No jaywalking. You're in California, it's legal. But if you're anywhere but California, it's illegal to jaywalk in the middle of the street without using a crosswalk. That's illegal. You can be fined. As well as always, take care of yourself and each other at the holidays. Take care of your families. Take care of your loved ones. Check in on them here and then. And always put your family first. And always remember this, autism is not your disability. It's a superpower. I'll see you back here Tuesday night. Have a good night.